Are others talking?
I'm not talking to you.
Is it hot?
It's a little warm.
It's just you.
Comfortable, but that means it's hot.
That's what I'm like.
But that helps.
So if you want.
I'm actually kind of.
So are you going to change?
That is possible.
Some change.
I know you guys need your pants and jackets.
Yeah, I know.
You didn't get the memo.
Well, Miss Springs. Been a long time since I've worn a suit jacket.
Show them where you can be. We've got one minute.
Dan, you can hear me, right? Dan?
Is Jan good?
She is. Yeah, I just.
Amy, are you ready?
Perfect time.
You have to wait till we go live for that. All right, welcome. This is the city council meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 22nd. I'd like to acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. I'd like you to join me if you can and are willing for the invocation. Father, we thank you for the beautiful day you gave us. Thank you for the beautiful part of the world we get to live in, work in, or play in, or all of the above.
City Council meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 22nd.
Pray today.
Press and public were notified of the meeting and it was freedom of.
All right. Father, again, just thank you for the day and the beauty and great place we get to live. Help us to be good stewards of the environment, of our talent, of our time that you so blessed us with. Father, pray for what's going on on the world stage right now. Just pray for a peaceful solution to what's happening in the Ukraine. Pray for those that are leading those conversations and dialogue. Just give them the right words to help avoid a conflict. Father, help us tonight as we take care of the city's business, that we will keep focused and do what's best in the greater good and not of our personal wants. And pray. Amen.
The last. The last state of America. The Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson is via Zoom. Councilmember Boghajian.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Popsen.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. Next item up is citizens' comments. Nicole, do we have?
Mr. Bond, Mr. Wallace Bonds. Mr. Bonds, if you approach and give your name and address, please, for the record.
You're here. Yep, thank you.
Hey, I'm Wallace Bonds. I live at 406 Caroline Boulevard. I'll be short this evening. A couple of years ago, I had a very large house built next to my house. The house was built up next to mine because of a lot of drainage problems in my lot. I went to the city for help over several months of emails and all kinds of other things. I feel like I received the help based off the city staff. The code doesn't say it's wrong where people come in and do that. So meantime, I've got a lot of tiny brick walls that I've erected in my yard that manage the water that comes in from the house that's built next to mine. So I'm just here to ask y'all, since you're a new city council, since nobody would help me a couple of years ago, if you guys will consider reviewing that code and maybe bolstering a little bit so that it doesn't happen to people in the future. So I know it does happen according to Douglas Carr and the Steel Works here. Having some, I think the code should be reviewed. I haven't looked into it for a while, but apparently it has been updated since 2004. So that's my request to y'all. I'd like to check back. There's a council that works on that and see if any partners has been on it or if you need my help.
Very good.
From my bad experience.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nicole.
Mrs. Neves had signed up, and I don't see her here. The person who signed up was Kathy Campbell.
Okay, Kathy. You can just state your city. If you don't want to give your address, it's all right.
Oh, I don't mind. I'm happy to say I live on 1020th Avenue.
Can you just make, pull the mic down?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Small people. Um, Mayor Pounds and members of council, thank you. I'd like to thank the ATAX Committee for all their work investigating the specifics on how setting up an IOP direct marketing organization can be successfully accomplished, including giving a detailed look at how Folly Beach has maintained its own DMO since 2004, and as have other communities such as Somerville. The city of Isle of Palms has been giving the Charleston Visitors Bureau our 30% ATAX money for over 20 years. They spend much of it paying for their brick and mortar buildings and pricey printed brochures, along with promoting downtown hotels and events such as Southeastern Wildlife Expo and Spoleto. So far this year, we have given them $557,000, far more than most of our surrounding communities. Setting up our own DMO would enable our city to use these funds as we choose, providing it relates to attracting or managing tourism. This could mean things like taking out online ads for the off-season, hosting festivals and cultural events, adding bike racks, fixing our sidewalks, landscaping, adding more golf cart access, golf cart parking on beach access paths, and beach preservation, to name a few. We currently have no contract with the Charleston Visitors Bureau and have no procurement code or metrics, making it impossible to have transparency or measure compliance on the spending of these funds. While I personally don't think we need to continue giving Charleston Visitors Bureau upwards of $3,000 daily while we requisition a task force, I acquiesce, but want to adamantly voice my concern for who is being appointed. Since many of you recently ran on a platform of residents first, including Mayor Pounds, having IOP residents represented is a no-brainer. Although they don't collect any ATAX money, Isle of Palms residents are affected first and foremost by any and all decisions made by this city, and they need an impactful representation. The Island Eye News recently reported that the task force would have representation by the IOP Chamber of Commerce and Food and Beverage Industries. Neither of these entities collects ATAX funds, and therefore I see no reason for them to be represented on this task force. The newspaper also reported that there would be reps from Wild Dunes Resort and the Palms Hotel. The hotels collect approximately 20% of ATAX funds, while short-term rentals collect approximately 80%. Assuming that voting will be a part of this task force's duties, this ratio needs to be applied to task force appointees and should include short-term property owners and their property managers. I implore you to consider these things when reviewing and confirming the appointees at today's meeting. I have this morning discovered that Turk has sent a letter to our state, South Carolina State Attorney General, asking for an opinion to say that setting up one's own DMO should now be deemed illegal if a DMO already exists that can be used. Since you all have also run on transparency, has someone here asked Turk to do this on behalf of Isle of Palms in an attempt to undermine this entire process? Thank you.
Nicole. Very good. Thank you. First item is our consent agenda approval of previous meeting minutes from January 25th, 6:00 PM. Without a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any, Nicole?
Council.
I've got one.
Oh, sorry.
Potential change.
Where?
I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Mayor. Under public safety. I wasn't with those.
Can I fix that?
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
I withdraw.
You sure?
Yes.
Nicole, go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson.
She's here.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Boghajian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All favor.
Thank you. Next item is a report from standing committees. We'll start with the Ways and Means. We've got a number of items, but we'll start with the first two items on our agenda. We've got guest speaker from Charleston Visitors Bureau tonight, Helen Hill, who is the CEO. Helen, thank you so much for joining us tonight and giving us some time. Very much appreciate you doing that for us. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the opportunity to spend a little time with you tonight. I first want to thank all of you for your community service. I get to see firsthand how much time and energy it takes to make our home a beautiful place to live, and thank you for that. My first job was a concierge at Wild Dunes Resort. I think it was still called the Beach and Racket Club then, which is how old I am. So first tonight, I'd like to report on the success that we had with expenditures FY '21 and then share the plans for FY '22 that are well underway. Charleston County has a little over 23,000 overnight accommodations for visitors to enjoy. Isle of Palms has about 6% of that total. Every day, the team at the CBB spends 100% of our energy focused on getting one of those visitors to make the decision to spend the night here at the highest possible rate. We do that with a coordinated marketing strategy focused on selling what makes our community so special. So let's briefly look at our '21 results. Now, one of our new research partners, if you click to the next one, is Key Data, and it's a new company that we hired specifically to help our beach communities because it allows us to forecast not only looking backwards, but also looking forward. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we had a very interesting year in '21. And I would say when it started, it was the worst year since Hurricane Hugo. I said a lot of times that I went from wondering how we were going to make payroll to we had the best year the hospitality industry has ever had. So you can see the great results, and you've already seen it in your budget because our state was able to do two things. We were able to keep our visitors safe and promote our area for visitation. A lot of that is because we have so many great outside activities. We were able to get a special grant from the South Carolina General Assembly to aggressively market our community. It's paid specific great results for the Isle of Palms. So we had our average daily rate was 30% higher, and our revenue was 45% higher. So although I'm glad for our great results, boy, am I glad that that is over. So let's move to '22. And our goal is to give you some detailed metrics of how we'll measure our success and support the tourism businesses on the Isle of Palms. So let's start with advertising and marketing. So you got it going forward. There you go. Yeah, that one right there. Advertising work. So we spend a lot of time and energy on making some really great buys on some titles that you all recognize, like Southern Living, AAA, Travel Leisure Condon House. And again, what we want to do is focus on building business at a time where Isle of Palms needs it. So then if you go to the next two slides, there's those titles. This is our current, I just pulled this, our advertising schedule. And it's a living document because it changes based on our research and market changes. So for example, last week, we announced Avelo Airlines, and they are going to be providing us some great new service from New Haven, Connecticut. So all of a sudden magically, New Haven, Connecticut is now on our TV and a schedule for our community. So we also have something really exciting. If you go to the next one, is a new specific site for the Isle of Palms. One of the things that we've been working with Accommodations Tax Committee was talking about the fact that we wanted to a specific site specifically for the Isle of Palms. So we bought some new domain names like Explore Isle Palms and Discover IslePalms.com, and this new site will have the power of the overall site, but it will also have the ability to stand alone. Now, the great thing about this, this will list all Isle of Palms businesses who are interested in the visitor market, not just those people that are members of ours. We've been working really closely with the newly formed Chamber of Commerce to integrate their plans into this. I also want to give you, if you move ahead, you can kind of slide through those.
Helen, can I do one thing?
Sure, of course.
So if that domain, it's underneath Explorer Charleston.
Right.
So it'll be a.
Yeah.
Click.
Yeah, and the beautiful thing is if it'll stand alone too. So you could go directly to that site, or it would be powered through all that advertising marketing, and you'd get to it that way. So it'd be good for everyone. Then if you, if you go on to where the other great new thing that we're focused on this year is the meeting convention and group business. We are so thankful that the group business is returning, and you can see that in our airport every day. With the completion of the Sweetgrass Hotel at Wild Dunes, we have a lot of new opportunities for group business, and that's particularly important in the off-season. So you will see that, and you can keep going, you can see there's that beautiful Sweetgrass Pavilion. And then you can see how we look at the metrics. We work really closely with the Wild Dunes sales staff to talk about generating those leads that specifically build that off-season business. Now, those of you who've been out to the Sweetgrass Pavilion, you'll see there's one particular kind of group business we're particularly excited about, and that is the wedding market. And our community's got a long proven track record for destination weddings, and that's where the bride and groom don't necessarily have a relationship to the community, but they want to get married here. And I think we've determined it's pretty recession-proof, that people, if they're going to get married, they're going to get married. And those of you who went to see that, y'all saw that, how they've even built that clear part at Wild Dunes so that bride and groom can have a beautiful photo taken. So on to the media relations. Our organization has a long track record of working with earned media and social media. Those of you who knew Mayor Carmen Bunch, we give her a lot of credit for helping us start our media relations program after Hurricane Hugo. Those of you who are around then know we had a lot of stories that were written, and things were bad. They were really bad. We had a lot of stories written about things that really weren't true. And Carmen was like, Helen, you need to call those people and tell them the real story. And sure enough, she was right, and we did. And that began our very long relationship with a lot of the press that we learned that you can sell to them like you can sell to media and convention planners. So we have a really great relationship with many travel writers, editorial boards, and other journalists. So if you go on, you can see there's some stories on the Isle of Palms to the next slide. And you'll see, this is a new report that we'll be giving to you all to sell you what the earned media was worth. So one of those stories that's placed for the Isle of Palms, what is that worth to us? And you can see, just in '21, it was worth over a little more than $5 million. So if you'll click through the next four slides, it'll just give you a little taste of the social media that we're doing for the Isle of Palms. And we're really trying to build the story of island life because we all know it's a lot more than the beach, right? It's more. So that's the kind of thing that we're doing through our social media program. And then as we click through that, you see our publications. We've got the Wedding Guide, the Golf Guide, and the Visitors Guide, all have beautiful features on the Isle of Palms. We laugh at our office and said, we really thought with the robust website that these printed publications were going to go away, but we still have continued high demand for them. People want to hold something in their hand. Now, visitor services. You know, it's imperative that visitors have someone oftentimes to talk to. And that might be even, we even have now online chat with visitors. So it's really fun to help them plan their trip. So if you could go to that next one, you can kind of see those. So I just want to finish by saying, thank you for our long partnership. I want to thank you that I'm personally, let you know that I'm personally committed to Isle of Palms. I love this place. I've been here my whole life. And we're looking forward to helping you in other ways with the continued new promotion of airlines. We all love new people that fly here that don't bring a car. And we also look forward to helping you with campaigns like The Coast is Clean, supporting your beach re-nourishment with the legislators, and even tourism management. It's a great pleasure to sell the Isle of Palms every day.
Yep.
Yeah. Helen, you have an Isle Palm specific link there.
Yes.
Are you going to do the same for other municipalities?
Well, we're going to try it out on you first, see how it works. Well, that was one of the things that, one of the questions that came up was, you know, how do you, with the people that may not want to be a member of Explorer Charleston, but they want, they're in the hospitality business, we said, let's find a way, right, to build up their business, and whether they're a member or not. So that's what this new site will do, which was one of the requests of the Accommodation Tax Committee.
I remember viewing that meeting. If I'm understanding correctly, that would be, that particular link, there would not be members in that group.
Right. Yeah, just, if you, if you're a business, and y'all get to decide who that is. I'm guessing that some people would want to be there, some people would not, but the key would be is if you, if they want visitor business, that would feed it. The beauty of this will be that all of this advertising and marketing that we're doing will feed into the main site. And if you're interested in beach interest, it'll go right to that. And if you want to do just something for Isle of Palms alone, you could do Isle of Palms alone. So both feed into one place.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Helen, thanks for coming. I appreciate it, the information. A couple of questions. One is, do you have any data that suggests for a dollar of advertising in a certain area, whether it's print, social, electronic, or digital media? What percent of the, it comes back to an Isle of Palm, in other words, how many, how many heads are filled, or beds are filled because of that advertising? Is there any direct link, in other words, to what you're doing and the number of visitors that come to the Isle?
Well, you know, we've always judged the success of marketing as, you know, were we able to create that overnight visitor? So we've looked at collections, accommodation tax collections as our way to do that. There are all kinds of other metrics that we can use. But again, our goal has always been focused on how do we create somebody who wants to spend the night?
Yeah. Um, so the answer is no, not direct.
Not directly. You know, we've got, if you, we've got a lot of conversion studies that talk about like this beautiful ad that we ran in Southern Living. Do you know what I'm saying? And then how many people inquired from that? But that doesn't necessarily tell you, did they actually book?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Um, second thing is, what percent of your overall budget goes to your overhead? In other words, the 52 employees and those type of things?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's less than, it's, it's less than 30%.
So 30% of the.
Less than that. I don't know, I don't know that specific, but we have a very, about 80% of our budget goes to advertising, sales, marketing, and media relations. We have a really small part of that.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to give you that specific. I'm sorry, I don't know that one off the top of my head.
I'm allowed to ask a question?
No.
No.
No, ma'am.
No, you're not allowed. Sorry. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have some, some concerns. I've been approached by a number of citizens about whether or not we are doing all of this appropriately from a legal perspective. And I would like to, before we vote on anything, I would like for us to go into executive session and talk to our attorney about this so that we can get a legal opinion before we go in further.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Can I ask, are we voting on anything?
We're voting on the approval of the fiscal '22 budget, which we're eight months into.
Yeah.
So there's, and you've had in your package, you've got what Helen and crew have sent to us, you know, around the percentages where the expenses would be. So we are voting on a budget that, again, we're 60% of the way through the year, 70% of the way through the year on.
Yeah.
Does it? A question to clarify. Is the motion to go into executive, executive session now?
I don't think it matters when we do it, but before we vote on this issue, I think we need to talk to legal counsel.
Just one suggestion. Brent has been, you know, city attorney. He's been the one that's been studying this and has provided opinions to myself and was prepared to give an opinion to the ATAX committee at their last meeting. He's not here today. I'm not sure if Mac has prepared in advance to provide legal advice on this question. My recommendation would be for you all not to take any action tonight, and that's something that can be taken up at the next meeting to ensure that those questions, that Brent comes prepared for that.
Now, I still think it would be helpful for both Brent and for Mac if we have executive session so we can identify all the issues.
Absolutely.
And have that tonight?
Yes.
Claire?
I think that'd be helpful.
To have a takeaway for our attorneys to come back prepared on next month.
Yes, sir. And then we can deal with it in 30 days.
Okay. And can we do that at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
What a withdrawing wish. Yes.
Okay, withdrawn.
Okay, as far as you go, withdraw until later.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we'll take up the second item underneath Ways and Means, and that's approval of a contract in Muddlin Pyrotechnics for the July 4th, July fireworks display. We have a, well, should we have discussion first since we have two options, Desiree?
Yes.
Here. Yeah, so go ahead if you want to.
Sure.
Give RFP background.
Yes, we submitted, we put together an RFP earlier this year and received two bids from, from only one vendor. It's not unusual. Every time we've done an RFP, there's not a whole lot of certified folks that do this type of work. So the bid that came back was from the same service provider that we've used in the past three years. As you all know, the past two years, we did not have a firework show. It is included and was included in the FY '22 budget, so thinking that the city might want to have that show this year, we put it out for bid and presented in your packet are the two, the two proposals. And essentially, the only difference is the amount of shells that they would be using and the timing of the show. The ones for $31,000, it's about a 22-minute show, and then about 27-minute show for $35,000.
Just a reminder, what's in the budget? I think it's 35.
30, yes, $35,000 are included in the budget, and that includes not only the cost of the fireworks show, but also some incidentals associated with, with meals and just miscellaneous items.
And I know we had a request about fire degradable fireworks, and I'm assuming that's not a thing.
That is not, yes, that was not included in the proposal, correct.
Um, is there overtime for all the city employees included in the proposal?
No. So the proposal is just for the fireworks show. The city does plan every year for the overtime expenses that are typically incurred during a holiday weekend. We always staff extra people during a holiday weekend, just July 4th. We would, we would do the same whether we have a fireworks show or not. It may be that folks don't, we don't have the same amount of people throughout the whole day and throughout the evening if we don't have a fireworks show, but the budget does contemplate some additional overtime for the show.
So if you don't mind, just to get some clarity here. So if you have a fireworks show, there's no additional cost to the city?
There is some, but again, we have, the majority of the, you know, the whole day, we have enormous amount of people on the beach. So we do staff throughout the day. If we have a fireworks show, you know, the people that we do staff will probably stay longer to ensure that the, you know, as people leave, we're probably managing that.
Estimate?
Of the cost?
Yeah.
Um, we have.
I remember in the past it being quite significant.
Yes. Um, I should know that. Let me see if I can pull it up.
Sorry, Desiree, you're saying while you're looking that up. I mean, there's, there's a certain level of overtime regardless of what's going on.
That's correct.
Regardless, so we've had that the last two years when we didn't have the fireworks show. So Jimmy's question is, what's that delta between what we know we would spend anyway to, what we're going to spend on on additional fireworks, additional overtime because of longer hours?
Mr. Mayor. Do you, does any, I guess, does anybody know, is any of this offset by ATAX funds, or is this all out of our general budget?
It is fully, fully paid for by state accommodations.
Okay.
One of the questions we had last time at the Ways and Means was other municipalities, if they were having fireworks this year, did we get any information on that?
So Sullivan Island will not do a 4th of July fireworks show. Theirs will be in December. And then Mount Pleasant is planning a show just like they have in the past few years, as Major Patriots point.
Yeah, if I read you correctly, general liabilities picked up, the cost is picked up in the actual bid that we have here.
Correct, that's.
Okay.
Okay, your question. Other questions, comments?
Can I make a motion?
You should would.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We'll go with option two, $35,000, 27-minute show. Everybody have fun.
I'll second that. Comments? Other discussion? Making up for the last two years, aren't you, Russell?
Yes. Tell you one thing, it causes, it does create quite a traffic jam on the island too. We all know that. So it's going to be a real challenge for our public safety staff and everybody else to move the traffic. And with us not having it for the last two years and it being on the beach, we're going to be overwhelmed.
Other.
Excuse me, one last question. What time is high tide that night?
It's around 4:00 on Monday.
Yeah, it's a long weekend, but the tide is important.
Yeah.
There's, I can go upstairs and there's a tide charge there. We, we should be able to Google this, shouldn't we?
Yeah, I know. It should be pretty easy. Let's see who wins, the technology.
Yeah, I just want to know that, but it's a big difference, it's low and high, but the crowd.
Sure, it's the crowd.
Eleven fifty-six P M.
Then we'll, we'll be about mid-time.
Mid-time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mac, you win.
I win.
It's not high, it's a four point two.
So.
Salome high.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Goshen?
Hi.
Councilmember Khan?
Hi.
Councilmember Myers?
Hi.
Councilmember Popson?
Hi.
Councilmember Strootman?
Hi.
Councilmember Ward?
Nate.
Mayor Pounds?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Amy, if you'll put up the uh, financial results, please. These are uh, city's financial results through January thirty-first, so seven months um, into our fiscal year. So as you see, a lot of the percentage is flying around, well, if you could see the percentage is flying around on that particular page, it's tiny print. Um, but we have new big TVs coming at some point, hopefully. Um, fifty-eight percent roughly would be our target for the year, so you can see a lot of our revenue, uh, we're significantly better, we're, our revenue through January is twelve point seven million, rough numbers. So we're ahead of budget on revenue, we're behind budget on expenses, we're in the right side. However, that expense number, we're pushing some projects to fiscal twenty-three, just due to timing and supply chain and everything else that we're all dealing with this year. So our revenues are good, uh, our local option sales tax and building permit revenues are twenty-five and eighty-four percent um, higher respectively than previous year in the budget. Uh, our operating expenses are about five percent ahead of last year, but well within our budget targets. Um, current forecast shows for fiscal, we will push a number of projects to fiscal twenty-three, which will be the phase three drainage uh, of about two point three million, a delay in a FEMA private residence project of six hundred and twenty thousand, the undergrounding of electrical lines at the marina for a hundred and twenty-five, again, all these pushing to fiscal twenty-three. A portion of our comprehensive drainage plan, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then the renovation construction of a public dock space at the marina for a hundred and fifty. So again, all those, we just did not get completed, will push to fiscal twenty-three when we do our budget workshop later in next month. Currently, the city has about thirty million dollars in cash reserves of that, about fourteen million, rough numbers are unrestricted and about sixteen million are restricted. Questions on that? Amy, if you'll go to the projects, we'll hit that, not to the projects, you understand, but to the project slide deck that came out all. Um, so real quick, we did this at Ways and Means last week, Desiree did, we've got some photos and some uh, updates for you with regard to the Marina Restaurant. Um, kitchen hoods installed, which is a big deal, bath partitions are now installed, countertops are being installed. Uh, drywall is finished, metal roof is finished, entry doors being installed, is onsite and being installed tomorrow. Kitchen equipment that they had been waiting on for some time is trickling in at a fairly slow pace, but happening. Heating HVAC is about ninety percent complete, pavers have arrived onsite. Um, then we'll start hopefully tomorrow, next day, as far as landscaping the sand pit area. Exterior painting was happening today, they're hanging light fixtures, they're setting plumbing fixtures, so getting to some of the aesthetic uh, pieces that haven't been happening of late. Everything goes planned, we're looking for an early March um, opening, which is right around the corner. Marina Dock Rehab, hopefully you've seen that, the, the fuel huts essentially complete. Desiree, I think they are working on reinstalling the fuel system back down to the platform. Um, everything looks really good. The electrical issues have been taken care of for all docks at this point. Uh, there's a new grip tape at the end of the gangways to take care of any slipping activity that we had there or concern. Is there anything else there? I know you gave me some updates on the Marina, but, on the restaurant, is there anything there that's worthy?
Not yet. I'm, I'm having a meeting with the contractor and the engineer tomorrow afternoon, so that I'm more up to date, update there. But um, other than that, I think that the main issue will be, not issue, but the main um, activity will be the fuel system and the dispensers.
Yeah, thank you. Phase three drainage, we've got three projects going on, as hopefully you know, at this point, thirtieth and thirty-six, our contracts been executed. The new start date for the outfall at Thirtieth Avenue um, will be early April. Uh, golf course work on the Harbor Golf Course at Wild Dunes will be completed by June. We'll have some roadwork going on um, on Waterway between July and August, and then roadwork for the thirty-sixth outfall between September and October. Um, so again, just lead times that have pushed these projects longer than we wanted to for certain components of the project. Forty-first Avenue still waiting on um, OCRM and Army Corps of Engineers permits, that's still pending. We'll talk about it later tonight, but the city did receive a one point four million dollar grant from the South Carolina Office of Resilience for this particular project. Comprehensive drainage plan progressing well and it's on schedule, two and three D modeling um, is going on last week and this week. Uh, the assessment and evaluation of collected data is underway and on track for completion by the end of this calendar year. Our last project is underground utility conversion at twenty-first and Palm. Uh, Dominion's close to having the bore profiles ready to submit to the S C D O T for permit and final design drawings. Our share of this fifty, we pay fifty percent, Dominion pays fifty percent, is included in the fiscal twenty-three capital project plan. And our construction is slated for fall or winter of this year, this calendar year. Thank you, Amy. So real quick, just from the minutes um, of our Ways and Means, last week, we hit on a lot of these pieces, financial results, projects, we discussed and approved our fiscal twenty-three ten-year capital plan. We um, looked at, just had a long discussion on evaluating alternatives for the redevelopment of the municipal lots at Front Beach. Um, that has been referred back to the Real Property Committee to discuss the parameters of an RFI that will happen at some point, I'm guessing. We, we, you guys haven't met since we talked, so that'll be next month's conversation. We had a consideration of approval for an amount of eleven, fifteen thousand to hire an expert to develop a report on the connector. We voted to postpone that for thirty days. We set up our fiscal twenty-three budget workshop, which will be one P M Wednesday, March sixteenth at the Rec Center. Our regular Ways and Means Committee will be Tuesday, March fifteenth at five P M. Questions? Just heard it all a week ago, so it's fairly fresh. Next is Public Safety Committee, Jan, Rusty, you doing that one?
Uh, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Uh, our chairperson, uh, Jen Anderson is with us tonight. Be assumed that it probably would be better for me as vice chair to uh, go ahead and present the uh, outcome of the two meetings we had last month. We weren't happy to have just one, we had two. So our first one was a special public safety committee meeting that was on Thursday, February the tenth. And in that particular meeting, we had all three committee members present. Uh, we also had a number of the city administration staff here, including, you know, Administrator Goso, Director Carr, and the chiefs of public safety were here as well, and our attorney, uh, Howerson. Uh, we looked at the, uh, the purpose of that particular meeting, it's pretty much twofold. Uh, one purpose was to, of the special meeting, was to update the public safety committee on the status, status of discussions between Isle of Palms and S C D O T regarding the agreed Isle of Palms connector study, and to discuss two possible scopes of work. So we had a lot of conversation about that. We will uh, we'll hear, be hearing more about that later, or we can, we can have Desiree speak to it briefly as we go through also. But basically, that was a set study go, goals, update on conversations, S C D O T, discussion of phase one and phase two, which basically deals with the Isle of Palms connector, but then there's the phase two would also deal with the entire corridor of traffic from Isle of Palms here all the way over to Highway seventeen, and also the feeder street that would come into that as well. So that would all have to be longer term and would be a coordinated effort. Mount Pleasant, Sullivan Island, and Charleston County, before there's any recommendations by the city council. Desiree, do you want to say anything to that? I know you're closer to it than all of us, because you've had subsequent meetings since we had public safety.
Um, yes, so the only update would be that this S C D O T and Secretary Hall continue, uh, committed to expanding the scope of the study to look at what you just described, sort of the whole corridor and in the intersections and um, you know, it's, the ball's in our court to provide her with an updated scope based on the discussions of the special public safety meeting. Um, I had a call today with Jennifer Bill, the traffic engineer that we've hired to do that, and um, we discussed some of her suggestions, and this will go to S C D O T, and Ms. Hall has indicated that a change order will be drafted to include that. Um, that will not be part of the first six-month um, study, which is mostly dedicated to the connector and the recent modifications, and whether or not there are alternatives that could, you know, uh, achieve our goal of ensuring emergency access and certainly accommodating pedestrians and bicyclists as well. Um, the kickoff meeting is scheduled for March fourth, it'll be here at City Hall. Um, and all of our partners are confirmed, as well as the O T and um, the consultant from Maryland.
And that March meeting is the connector study?
That is correct, for the first, first phase of the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, we also uh, made it clear, and of course, I know everybody in this room is very familiar with it, but we have uh, certainly expressed to South Carolina D O T uh, all along how disappointed we were in how the connector was re-stripped last year, how it was done suddenly without our input. And uh, you know, we continued to exchange some feedback with them, but we also, at this special meeting, uh, we wanted to deal with another matter too. And it basically, we wanted to move into executive session, which I made a motion to do, and it was approved unanimously, receive legal advice regarding S C D O T's actions related to the Isle of Palms connector. And uh, we did have quite lengthy discussion in executive sessions in, in regard to that. We came out of it after about an hour, we didn't make any, any, uh, we had no votes, no action, taking executive session. Uh, but we did have some real, really good discussion coming out of that, so. Um, and we had our, you know, we had some updates also from Chief, Deputy Chief Hathaway to talk about safety of the connector from his standpoint uh, as to how safe or unsafe that had been over the course of the, of the first summer season and fall season that we had that in place. We looked at the number of accidents that have been on the connector, and so we saw how that has actually doubled in two thousand twenty-one versus what it was prior, prior to the re-stripping. And uh, talked about some other things from a public safety standpoint too, including some of the uh, EMS response time and uh, uh, and we had uh, Chief Cornet give us an update on that too. So uh, we even talked about hurricane evacuation planning as part of this phase two, the scope two will be, we'll kind of weave that into all that discussion too. So uh, we've got a motion came out, or a recommendation that came out of this pu, the special public safety committee meeting. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I should bring this up now.
Sure.
Uh, and that would be a recommendation that a letter be sent to S C D O T based on statute fifty-seven dash eight dash twenty, that the city has not agreed to the changes.
The, the statute's wrong on the agenda, I was just going to correct that, about why you're making the, the motion.
Okay, you want me to finish it and then you want to take the motion correct?
Or I just give you the?
Okay. So that's wrong in the wording.
The stat, the statute numbers are wrong, that's all.
Oh, the statute numbers are wrong?
Yes.
All right, so what are the statute numbers?
Fifty-seven dash five dash eight two zero.
Okay. Got that? All right. But anyway, um, based on that statute, city had not agreed to the changes to the connector and requests that the connector be returned to its original striping under such time as an agreed-upon change to the connector can be reached. So we've got that on here as a recommendation, and uh, we can have some discussion about that, Mr. Mayor, if you like.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we discuss this particular item.
Discuss and approve.
Discuss and approve.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, if I recall, didn't, uh, we sent some letters already to this hall um, last year, I think there was a couple of the letters.
There were two last year that we sent, um, and specifically just around to Rusty's point, um, displeasure and how it was done, when it was done, no collaboration. Desiree, am I remembering right? It was two separate letters, Kevin, to your point.
One in March, March third, and one on March twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
And in one of the letters, we requested for the, the changes to be put back to how it were, how they were, and also we made the point about the statute that requires um, municipality approval to be obtained, I guess, before any changes are made.
Great.
Did we get a response to either of those letters?
Um, not a formal response in writing, but that, the, the conversations that resulted in the commitment to having a study done that not only looks at what the recent modifications look like, um, but whether there are other alternatives that S C D O T may consider to um, address the concerns that were expressed by the city.
Mr. Mayor, my, my, my concern is they didn't formally respond to the prior letters. We have a statute that, in my opinion, uh, they have violated because they did not get our permission to make the changes to the connector. We are now a year later, and we have traffic data that suggests that there's, that there is some correlation between the, the striping and the accidents. We have had double the number of accidents on the connector that we've had in the past. Uh, whether there's a direct correlation or not, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, and I think that it, it behooves us as a council to put D O T on notice as to our position and ask them to return the striping. They have actually stated publicly that it's just paint. Well, if it's just paint, then they can return it just as quickly as they did it. And not return it forever, but return it to its prior condition for cause of public safety until such time as we can communicate with D O T and agree upon a change to the connector that makes sense for everybody. That's, that's what I believe the committee wanted, you know, was trying to um, portray in the letter that we would like to have sent to S C D O T. To that end, I'm happy to volunteer to be the scrivener and then present that letter to council for approval.
John?
Yeah, I, I, I think I have some, some of the questions I had answered, but I, 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 I didn't know what the intended outcome of this letter was. We've already sent a letter, it seems like, um, they've not responded. I, 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 we seem to be working with uh, with them at this point. We also have some other work going on with our lobbyists and trying to approach them. And I just don't know the best sequence. I agree that uh, they violated the statute, it appears. Um, not responded as to why, and I think we're due a response. But I'm not so sure the timing of when all this should occur. I think we, we've got some progress, it seems like, going on right now, and I'd hate to um, you know, do something that would then put us back in our corners again, if you will. That's my only, that's my only concern with doing is the timing.
Well, if I may respond to that, Ed, I agree with you. As a trial lawyer, I like being in the corner, but that's, I guess, a different, a different uh, story. If we draft, begin drafting a letter, even if it's tomorrow, it's going to be thirty days before this council approves that letter at a minimum, and that letter's sent. So it, that, from that perspective, that gives everybody time to sit down and have the March fourth meeting, and perhaps after that meeting, the letter's no longer needed. Uh, don't know the answer to that question, but it, but at least we have it in the works and it's ready to go, if it is.
Okay.
The, the March fourth meeting, um, who's going to be in attendance? Is it a public meeting? Is council going to be attending? Who's? Who is attending?
That would be the staff, so myself, our traffic engineer, the police chief, Douglas Carr, um, the consultants from Maryland that are coming down, um, and S C D O T staff. So it'll be a staff meeting. I did invite the mayor um, to be with us for the kickoff meeting, but after that, it'll really be an operational and tactical meeting.
I guess I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial for us to show kind of what we're wanting to say in this letter, that this is something that's important to us, and if, it's, you know, if it needs to be just, I, I don't know, something in writing, or if if we all could show up and just say hello and say that this is something that we really would like to get done. I mean, you know, I, I don't know exactly how the meeting is intended to go, but um, I don't know, I feel like it might help to have some. I feel like it might help to have some FaceTime.
Precise.
Yeah, but if we did that, that would constitute a public meeting, basically. And we would have to advertise that twenty-four hours' notice. We'd have to make sure that pretty much anyone could show up for that. Uh, probably even be live streamed, I would guess. So I, you know, my personal opinion is that we let the plan be, be in place the way it is right now. Where you have the SEDOT staff, and I'm not sure if that includes Christie Hall or not, but probably for regional directors or whoever, I'm not sure. Desiree would know that. But our staff, their staff, and neighborhood municipalities are part of that too?
Not, no, not for this, yeah.
Okay, so then that way, if we seem to be moving in the right direction, maybe we get some sort of concessions in that March fourth meeting that lead us to believe that maybe the letter wouldn't be necessary. I don't know. We approved unanimously coming out of the public safety special meeting uh, to bring the subject up tonight because we felt like it definitely deserved all of us waiting in a, waiting in on some counsel here. So that's why we brought it to the table, so. Uh, but personally, I'd rather see us, see what the outcome of this meeting is before we actually send the letter.
Rusty, you mentioned. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Jan.
Um, I'd just like to, to add the um, for the uh, the phase one study is going to be a quick turnaround study. So it, we're sort of working on a trajectory where if we write the letter and have them change the road, any, well, phase one will be completed just about the time they change it. And we'd have to change it to something else if we find something better for our community. And I'd love to leave that option open. So we're really talking about whether we really need to do the uh, reverse back and then reverse forward again in the next three to six months. So um, I think with uh, Councilman Hahn's suggestion that we go ahead and draft the letter and wait another month to determine on that, I think you'll have a better idea of whether that is true or not. Um, so my suggestion would be to go forward with that. Um, knowing that South Carolina DOT finally is, is working in our favor right now. And I don't really want to upset the apple cart by doing something that might change that. So if we could, if we could do, go ahead and proceed to draft the letter that we hold in the bay since the next month, I would be in favor of that.
And Rusty, you mentioned when you were walking through the minutes, um, conversations from our public safety personnel with regard to the effect the connectors had on our response times and such. Was there anything in the minutes that?
Uh, no, it wasn't any real effect on the response times that we got back. It was the number, we were looking at just some of the data and the number of accidents. It doubled in that one year period of time from, based on the chart that we saw, uh, which was pretty alarming, look, quite honestly. You know, because you look at it, you got double incidents, incidences. And of course, Councilmember Hahn, you know, spoke to it a while ago too. And that we don't know how that relates, you know, to whether, to the striping or re-stripping or not. But there certainly were a lot more fender benders. I don't think there were many serious accidents, but there were a number of accidents that, according to the chief, that had to be moved over to the side uh, at that point. But I don't think any serious changes.
Yep. Go ahead, Jan.
Okay, with respect to traffic volume, the public sector perspective, we went from twelve accidents in a year on the connector to twenty-four, twenty-three accidents in a year, which is a very low number. It could be related to the volume of traffic coming, biggest volume of traffic over the causeway during that period. And uh, I believe the statistics show that most of the accidents are, a number of the accidents were distracted drivers, which would not be affected by the change in the striping. All of those things are items that South Carolina DOT would take into consideration when looking at accident data. So I don't think we have, I think we're safe enough now. I think we always need to work to keep our, our roads safe. But it's not a, a dire condition out there that we need to be tremendously concerned about, I guess, is the way I would say it.
And Mr. Mayor, we have disagreement with that. With, with all due respect to, to Councilman Anderson, I, I disagree with her. Um, that, that it is a life safety issue from my perspective, and it's something that needs to be dealt with. Uh, and SEDOT, just for the record, has admitted publicly that they changed the striping on the connector with no study. The, the comment from their engineer was that it, that a directive had come from on high and they just did it. So with that said, I'm happy to be the scrivener.
I think, just a final comment, real quick. You know, I don't have a issue with drafting a letter and holding it in our pocket. I'm where John is. I do not want to do anything at all to change our momentum with the DOT and what's happening. We'll have a meeting in seven days essentially and get a feel, Katie, to your question, you know, and get a feel for how long this is going to take. The scope's written, the scope's agreed to, you know, there's an amendment to the scope coming up. Um, you know, so if we have another trigger point, which is our next council meeting at the end of March to kind of assess where we are, or your point, have something drafted if we want to send it. If we feel good about our progress with what's going on. Like I say, I don't necessarily have an issue with drafting something and having it in our pocket. But I absolutely want to have another trigger point to decide to move forward or not. And we have that with our next council meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Your comments, yep.
Well, I just want to be clear, or, because it says recommendation that a letter be sent to SEDOT. And now we're talking about a draft, so what is it we're voting on?
I think that's fair. Our current motion is exactly that. Yeah.
Right.
Can we make an amendment, Kevin, if you want to?
This would be if Mr. Streetman wants to do a friendly amendment. Monica, you make an amendment, we still have to vote on the original, which means sending it. So he's going to have to maybe, I think maybe the cleanest thing is to withdraw this one, reword it, however you want to reword it.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw the, uh, the motion that I made.
In a second.
In a second.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we figure out how to do this. All right, let's see. We uh, want to make a motion that we draft a letter that could be sent to SEDOT at a later date uh, in regard to disagreement with the changes to the connector and the re-stripping.
All we need to do, I think. So if, if I may, um, Councilman Streetman, I'll add, add, could add to his motion that we will draft the letter now for consideration to be sent at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. For consideration to be sent at the next regular council. I'm good, okay. So in a second, second.
Do, do we want this letter to also include a request that it be returned to its original striping?
I mean, that's, that's what originally came out of the committee.
Is that what we want to, okay. So the full motion except rather than just dropping it.
Correct. Nicole has voted before we amend it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Goshen?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Nay.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Rusty?
Okay, um, we'll make it another bit.
No, we're not.
Okay, so, so the public safety, the special meeting, that pretty much covers everything that we had at that point there. And uh, we made a motion to adjourn. All right, so that was a special meeting. A regular public safety meeting was held on Thursday, February the seventeenth. And in that meeting there, uh, our chairperson, uh, Councilmember Anderson could not be with us because of uh, family obligation. And uh, uh, in attendance was Councilmember Hahn and myself. And we also had Administrator Fregoso, Chief Briscoe, and Chief Cornet, and Chief Hathaway there as well. So we uh, we did reorder the agenda uh, and had some citizens' comments. We had one citizen that came up and spoke on behalf of the connector and how they would like to see a situation where it would be considered for, to have uh, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Our first citizen co-comments was Mr. Chris Aaronhold, who spoke on behalf of Lovello. And we, we'll be taking an action on that in a little bit. But he came before the committee to discuss twenty-twenty-two bike ride and asked for city sponsored event status. So that event will be this year on Saturday, November the fifth, and have the same site plan as last year. So we talked about some of the logistics on that, how Lovello intends to engage more local businesses and citizens at the event and do more of a festival type atmosphere there. So Chief Cornet had said that uh, he had reviewed the plans, made recommendations back, felt good that they were all going to be appropriately staffed. And, and uh, he and Chief Briscoe both supported the plan. So we, we did that. I guess we could probably, Mr. Mayor, go ahead and vote on that at this point, because we do have a recommendation here uh, on our regular agenda to approve the Lovello bike ride on Saturday, November the fifth, twenty-twenty-two as a city sponsored event. And I would like, I would like to make the motion that we consider that, discuss and approve.
Second. Questions?
Yes, sir.
Just concerned about the businesses on the front beach. They had a really rough time last, this past year with it. Have they, have you discussed with the business owners? And have you made any amendments to um, the fencing that was put up? Last year, it was like, it was, it was done like on a Thursday, I believe. And the event was on Saturday.
Yes, we've, we've had those conversations with the Lovello team. Um, the amount of tents and the amount of infrastructure that they have to put to support the event. Um, unfortunately, they seem, they're not able to start installing all that any, anytime later than that Thursday. Or their original request was to close the road on Wednesday and we pushed back on that. Um, so they're moving it to Thursday. Uh, the placement of the fencing is going to be different than last year so that the, the, there's um, sort of unfettered access between the festival and those businesses. Um, I know they're, they're really focusing on, on, on changing their approach and how they participate and work with the local business community. And there's some concessions that are being made about their uh, participation as a food vendor. Um, and they've started those one-on-ones outreach sooner, soon. They've already started already. And I think that they're putting together a group of local folks that will serve as a liaison with, with the business community. Um, since then, we've, a- as you all know, we've been holding quarterly meetings with the business community uh, here on IOP. Um, and we've had, and just a, a hu- huge improvement in that. And um, the, the, the folks seem to embrace it, and I think that the changes will, will serve them well.
Did you bring this up at the, the, the meeting today at the IOP business meeting?
We, our next one is in March.
I thought they went today.
No, ma, no, so.
Somebody told me they did, one of the officers.
I mean, they might have had a chamber of commerce.
Maybe that was.
Okay, is the fencing that they had, is, was that for like the bike ride itself? Or was that for the business? Because I was there and it was, it was, it was a pain. My daughter was actually trying to volunteer and couldn't even like get through the fencing. So is that like for the cyclists or what's the purpose of the fencing? Because that's, I'm just wondering, I know they're talking about changing it, but if it doesn't need to be there at all, then it seems like that would solve a lot of the problems.
So the fencing was mostly uh, around the area where they were going to have the after-party, where beer and wine was going to be served. And that's something that, you know, we typically have in events like that, so that the consumption only happens in that, in that area. But that's something that's being revised this time around about not blocking the um, sort of the sidewalk.
Right, because I mean, when we have front beach vests, you can go, you know, you can walk pretty much everywhere. And I feel like if you had it like that, and that's the type of situation where I, the businesses are probably benefited from people being there. So I feel like there's a, a better way of doing it. So I was just curious if it had something to do with the wanting to make sure that nobody ran out in front of a bike or something, or if it was, if it was for that reason.
Yeah, well, we've had Chief Cornet and I have had several meetings with the Lovello team. We're starting early this year to address some of those um, same concerns. And they seem to be very willing to um, trying out things differently this, this, this time around, based on the feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was my sense of it too, Desiree, that there was a, a lot of openness uh, to, to make sure that we get out in front of it this year to really work closely with the businesses, we have the business community, and make sure that we have really good communication all the way, all, all the way around. Last year, there were a couple of the businesses at least that did not, the right people were not contacting timely. So we, you have the general manager or the owner who really didn't understand what was going to happen, even though there'd been advertisements about it out there. And somehow the communication just didn't get uh, circled around effectively. And we had a couple of businesses like the Dinghy and Co-op that actually participated and had uh, coupons and things like that that they provided as well. So they had, they had gotten the message and they were part of it. There were over eight hundred uh, riders that were entered in that event. We had a lousy weather that refrained the currents. So we only had about two hundred and fifty people that actually did ride. Uh, but that event raised more than one point three billion dollars for MUSC Hollings Cancer Center. And we had one of our citizens here, uh, Ms. Julie Nestor, Nestler, that really did an admirable job working for our fire department and the windjammer and putting together a great event that raised thousands of dollars too. So for that, we're all, all grateful as well. So I, you know, I think we've got plans in place, at least the beginning of the plans, if we could do this and do it even more effectively this year. They were excited about being out here, even though the weather was bad. And they promised to order up better weather this, this year, so.
Other questions, comments, Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fregoso?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on. We did, uh, we had some discussion about the noise ordinance and outdoor concert, the commercial district in our regular uh, public safety meeting. And we did have a, a couple of our business owners from Front, Front Beach that spoke at that. Bobby Ross was there, uh, Brett Jones was there also, and uh, we had some pretty good conversation right here in this room. And uh, uh, and again, we talked about, you know, maybe better defining what the noise level should be. It may be coming up with a decibel level uh, that would be acceptable to everybody. And uh, we think, uh, I think we'll have some more information about that later that we'll be able to share with everybody, take some action on. Uh, we had our regular, regular public safety reports. Fire Department interim Chief Briscoe, uh, he told us that we're fully staffed in the fire department at this point. And uh, he complimented the Lovello staff himself and said how well they had worked with the fire department staff during that particular time, in particular with the fire marshal during the event last year. Chief Cornet reviewed the activities of the police department, and we still are shorthanded in the police department. But uh, uh, they're working hard to try to get that staffed up. And right now, our big opportunities with beach service officers, uh, you know, that we don't have many of those on hand at this point. And we're trying to get that staffed up for the summer season. So trying to look for creative ways that we may be able to attract some more beach service officers. And uh, I think Desiree and the chief, we're going to have further conversation about that, what the, what the needs may be and come back to us in public safety. And we had the uh, uh, some conversation about the polar plunge that was held last Saturday and a good event. And it raised over thirty thousand dollars, I think it was, for Special Olympics. The Isle of Poms coming in number two behind Mount Pleasant in the uh, fundraising. So it was a really good event out there. And uh, under old business, we talked about, uh, we just had our update on the modification of the Isle of Poms connector. Uh, included assessment of alternative configurations to improve traffic flow, pedestrian emergency access, and expanded scope for that corridor study we were talking about earlier. So we've dealt with Lovello, that was part of our new business, dealt with that tonight. Uh, and uh, we had the resolution authorizing the consumption of beer and wine, and street closure of the Front Beach Festival on March the fifth. And I think we have that later on that we will take up. And then we also discussed the capital plan for police and fire. And then we also discussed the capital plan for police and fire for the year two. There were, there was no other business, so our next regular meeting, we had set for Thursday, March the third at ten AM, and that ends my report, Mayor.
Questions? Thank you, Rusty Public Works. Jimmy?
Thank you, sir. Public Works Committee met four thirty PM Thursday, February third, the previous minutes, during this comment, the department report. Yard debris and garbage collection were up slightly over last year. Vehicle maintenance costs were light. For January. The public works department very busy, getting things ready for the summer. On their old business, we had update on face free drainage that the mayor's already covered. So we'll go to update on the previous golf cart path along Ocean Park Plaza. And there are no updates on this project. We're waiting to hear back from SC DOT engineers. And and post my permit was submitted prior to the January meeting. There's been no response. The administrator will continue to follow up with them in hope of getting the project completed before the season is a real safety issue. Under new business, we discussed the proposed fiscal year twenty-three capital projects budget. And uh. Under miscellaneous business, the next meeting will be held Thursday, March second at four thirty PM. And the meeting was adjourned four fifty-six.
Questions? Thank you, Jimmy. Questions? Thank you, sir. Recreation?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recreation committee met on February seventh. All um council members and staff were present. We approved the previous meeting's minutes. We did not have any citizens' comments. And then Director Page gave her monthly report. She summarized the programs and the event and don't want to go through all that. The residents can go online to. See what's going on as far as the program and the events. She also reported that the rec tract for online rest. Uh, registration should go live as of that meeting, but I actually attended the staff meeting last week. And they said they are up and running and it's easy to get on and register. Uh, and if there's any questions, Director Page can help them. Under old, old business, we didn't have anything to discuss. Under new business, the discussion of the ten-year capital plan. Director Page reviewed the capital requests from the recreation department for fiscal twenty-three, which included monies for some items that. If if they fail, that we were price. For example, scoreboard, scrumers, et cetera. There was also discussion about adjusting the basketball courts and adding a pickleball court or two. Uh, this will just require further discuss, uh, discussion. Uh, Councilman Ward suggested that we should look into upgrading the electrical system in in a couple of the rooms, which we all agreed. And our next meeting is March seventh at twelve thirty. And if there's not any questions, so end of my report.
Well, thank you, sir. Personnel Committee, John?
The Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, February eighth. All members were present as well as City Minister for Administrator Fregoso and HR Officer Ladd. We had an update on the hiring of the Fire Chief. City Administrator Fregoso and HR Officer Ladd have completed interviewing the top three candidates and have narrowed down to two candidates at this point. They are arranging for those two candidates to visit for meetings with City Council and the department with a final selection sometime in early March. Uh, Chief Briscoe will be here through the end of March, so hope is that there will be some overlap to allow for a smooth transition. Um, we discussed establishing a Spirit of the Island Award, attach as a proposal outlining the award. I think I would like to make a motion at this point that we approve the award as written.
Second.
Uh, discussion on that.
I just appreciate everybody considering it. I I think it's important to recognize individuals or groups that have done something outstanding or a series of contributions to our community. So thank you for your consideration.
Nicole?
Councilor Anderson?
Hi.
Councilor Pogosian.
Hi.
Councilor Han.
Hi.
Councilor Myers.
Hi.
Councilor Popsen.
Hi.
Councilor Streetman.
Hi.
Councilor Ward.
Hi.
Mayor Pounds.
Hi.
All in favor?
Jimmy, thank you for bringing this up and pushing it to conclusion. I think it's a good complimentary award to.
Appreciate everyone's support. Thank you very much.
Um, the committee discussed establishing a code of conduct for members of city council. Apparently in two thousand seventeen, a code of conduct was developed for city council as well as members of boards and commissions. We agreed that the two thousand seventeen version was a good place to start as far as a code. But that it should initially apply only to city council, not boards and commissions. It was also thought that the code enforcement was better laid out in the City of Charleston document. Administrator Fregoso will combine the respective sections from the two documents and we will review at the next meeting of personnel. We discussed filling the vacancy on the IOP Water and Sewer Commission. There were four candidates, of which the Water and Sewer Commission narrowed down to two. The two candidates will be interviewed by the Personnel Committee at the March meeting and one selected for the open slot. We discussed FY twenty-three capital plan, which was, was discussed at Ways and Means. The next meeting will be at nine AM on Tuesday, March eighth.
Jimmy, quick question, sir. The two finalists for this commission appointment. Will we give, are you going to make that recommendation or are you going to let the council make the recommendation?
Uh, I think the committee will make the recommendation and bring to council.
Will council, if they so decide, could they make other recommendations? Oh. Good question. I don't have the answer to.
Ultimately, yes. I mean, it's up to council to make the appointment.
Right, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? John, thank you. Real Property Committee, Rusty?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Real Property Committee meeting was on one thirty PM Monday, February the seventh. And we had all of our council members present, Myers, Popsen, and Streetman, and we also had Administrator Fregoso, Director Carr. Uh, we did, we had no citizens' comments, no Marina tenant comments. We went through the different capital projects, which has already been covered last week with Ways and Means, and again tonight by the mayor. So I will give you no further updates at this point on the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project, the Marina Restaurant Renovation. Uh, and we'll move right on to item C, which we had an update on, was the proposed public dock and green space at Isle of Palm Marina. And at that point, Administrator Fregoso reported that Salmon's has begun working on the fixes needed, and I think that's been done at this point. Temporary fixes, that is. And uh, and there are also, I think fleets on the, on the hoop ramp were removed, so people can't tie up there.
That's correct. That's correct.
And they also took the kiosk out that used to be the former Water Sports Point of Sale. And they got benches there now, so someone could go in there under a covered area and sit there and just kind of look and reflect. On the intercoastal waterway. Uh, and we also have sixteen resident-only parking spaces down there. Also, if you have the proper decal, you know, either the Isle of Palms. Decal or the Wild Dunes, and of course golf carts are welcome as well. So. I've got one question I'll ask Desiree of you as an update, but you know, that dock right now is currently just open all the time, right? The gate?
It's opened, it's opened and closed in the evening. So it's open, it opens at sunrise and it's locked by sundown.
Pretty much like a county park.
Pretty much, yes.
All right. So we do have some security down there in regards to having that gate closed and locked, but it's overnight.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And again, there's still a lot of work to do. There's, you know, there's going to be a lot of work in developing that entire area down there, and you'll hear much more about that later. Uh, update on the ADA beach access improvements. Uh, we had, we submitted a request for green belt funding for the thirty-four A beach access. And there was an onsite visit scheduled for February the twenty-third. Tomorrow. And we should be able to get some feedback hopefully about the project's eligibility for funding. And we also, Director Carr shared some positive information or conversation we have with Matt Schlegel. Of DHEC regarding the city's request to extend, extend the Moby mats to the hard sand on some of our beach paths, particularly Forty Second at this point. And uh. If we, I'm not sure if we've heard officially on that yet, Desiree.
Not yet.
Or Douglas?
Not yet, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the public comment period just closed.
Yeah, okay. So we should be hearing something hopefully pretty, pretty soon. And uh. We had an item on here, discussion of shared parking at the Marina. We felt like we really needed to go into executive session on that, so motion was made. And it was passed unanimously to go into executive session to receive legal advice in regards to Marina leases and parking at the Marina. So we moved into executive session for a while. And when we came out, we, after our discussion, there were no votes or no action taken at that point. Moving on to new business, we discussed some evaluate, discussed evaluating alternatives for redevelopment of our municipal parking lots. And we had some discussion about that at Ways and Means last week, and basically that has been directed back to Real Property to put a little more. Little more structure around that, what that may look like, but we're just looking at maybe some ideas the council can consider to really beautify that lot down there without losing. One single parking space. You know, we, we, we don't want to compromise parking in any way, but I think we all would agree that it could be a. A better looking area down there other than a flat barren lot if we really put our heads together and maybe get some ideas from. Developers and community and uh, and bring some ideas back for us to consider. So then we talked about the capital plan, the tenure capital plan for the Isle of Palm Marina and the Front Beach area, so we dealt with that. And that was pretty much our, our meeting. And uh. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March the seventh at one thirty PM. That is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Questions? Thank you, Rusty. Next item, reports from city officers, boards and commissions, board of zoning appeals, minutes are attached, planning commission, the next meeting is the twenty-third tomorrow. Accommodation tax advisory committee, no meeting in February. The environmental advisory committee, the minutes are attached. And given that this is a new initiative for the city, John Pogosian is our liaison to that committee. Would you mind just giving us a overview and an update? I think you've had three meetings and a couple of our members are.
Yeah, yeah, I would. As you know, the Environmental Advisory Committee is a relatively new committee. It's made up of nine very impressive island residents that are very passionate about the island and very passionate about the environment. Um, of which a couple I see in the audience, so thank you for coming this evening. Uh, as with any new group, though, it, it definitely one that's set with an unclear mission and being new. It takes a while to get established and organized. I believe that this group is through that phase and set to move forward. They have developed a mission statement that focuses on four ecological issues. One, reduction and management of litter and waste. Two, review and maintenance of water quality. Three, protection of habitat and wildlife, and then four, leadership in climate action. The plan is to, to, to develop one or two actionable items for each of the four areas of focus. And there's been quite a few for each of those that brainstorm and come up with quite a few, but there's going to narrow down to one or two actionable items. The focus will be on low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that can be done fairly quick without changes in ordinances or requiring significant funding. As these items develop, they will be bubbled up to Ways and Means our council as appropriate. Uh, I'd also like to add that the focus of the committee is on public education. So you will see various forms of communications, including quarterly island I news articles and other forms of education throughout various events in the island. That's, that's a brief overview. Again, I, I think there's had three meetings since the inception of it, but it's, I think, like I said, they're formed. They're coming together very well and uh, and contribute, contribute by, by all the members of the, all nine members. So it's, it's a good group.
Desiree, anything you want to add?
No.
And just to the couple of folks that are here tonight, thank you all for participation and help on that. I think it was a great initiative to get kicked off. I've had a couple of conversations with some of the members and it does seem like good progress and headed down a good path. So, John, thank you for liaising with that group. Item six, reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions, seven. Positions received, referred or disposed of, none. Eight bills already in possession of council, none. Nine introductions of new bills, resolutions and proclamation. The first one is a resolution. Two oh two two dash oh three, authorizing the consumption of beer and wine on March fifth, twenty twenty-two at the beach, Front Beach Fest.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Two one.
Councilor Anderson.
Hi.
Councilor Pogosian.
Hi.
Councilor Han.
Hi.
Councilor Myers.
Hi.
Councilor Popsen.
Hi.
Councilor Streetman.
Hi.
Councilor Ward.
Hi.
All in favor?
I don't want them to make just to do it.
Next one is resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four. This is one that is great news and good to be bringing in front of council at this point. This is authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a community development grant. Mitigation agreement between the city and the South Carolina Office of Resilience to fund the construction of the Forty First Avenue overhaul project. This is about a million four. Sorry, Jimmy.
Motion to approve resolution?
Second.
Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pogosian.
Hi.
Councilwoman Han.
Hi.
Councilwoman Myers.
Hi.
Councilwoman Popsen.
Hi.
Councilwoman Streetman.
Hi.
Councilman Ward.
Hi.
Mayor Pounds.
Hi.
All in favor?
Thank you. Last one is an ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one, an ordinance to change the method of nominating candidates for and determining the results of nonpartisan elections. And to change the location for filing statements of candidacy.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and discuss.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment that we break this into two parts.
Second.
Break it into two parts?
Right.
So the location.
Go ahead.
So change the location of filing.
Okay.
Make that part one, and then part two would be determining the results of a nonpartisan election. And before we get into discussion on either one of those items, I know there's a difference of opinion, if you will, on what we can do with a first reading. So we've got a motion to review and discuss. For extreme cleanliness, do we need to suspend rules of order?
That's proper channel to take.
So let's just do that, just so we can.
Vote on that too.
Yes. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we suspend the rules of order so that we can have a discussion on a first reading of an ordinance.
Second.
Catch up.
Yep.
So back on the second one, and I'm still confused. And Councilor Pogosian, were you the one that seconded that motion?
No, I think it's.
So let's, yeah, so this vote is on the suspending the rules of order so that we can have a conversation and discussion around this.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilor Pogosian.
Hi.
Councilwoman Han.
Hi.
Councilwoman Myers.
Hi.
Councilwoman Popsen.
Hi.
Councilwoman Streetman.
Hi.
Councilman Ward.
Hi.
Mayor Pounds.
Hi.
All in favor?
So now I've got an amendment to break this into two pieces as we stated earlier. Questions, comments? Thoughts on that? Or we can go straight to the vote?
Um, no, just the. For the audience in attendance and the people watching at home. We probably need to expand a little, a little bit, and if you would take the lead on that, I appreciate it.
I'll be glad to, Jimmy. I was, I was going to get all these amendments out of the way, but I'll do it now. So currently, when a resident wants to file to run for office, as of this last election in twenty twenty-one November. Uh, we all had to traipse up to Leeds Avenue to the Board of Elections, and that's the first time we've done that. Typically, we file here at City Hall with the check and. Form that you have to file to do that. So we would like to change that back to City Hall just for the convenience of our residents so that they do not have to go up to the Board of Elections. That's part A of this conversation.
Right. Is it, is that in form of motion, Mr. Mayor?
Um, not right now. Let me just walk through everything because we've got a motion on the table to break it into two pieces.
Okay.
So let me just walk through. Go ahead, Desiree.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on, on this particular topic of where candidates file their statement.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify uh, on, on this particular topic of where candidates file their statement of candidacy. The, the ordinance has, hasn't been changed in, in recent memory, that I recall. Um, but historically, the city has always accepted those statements of candidacy here. And at the end of the filing period, we take the check um, that they have to submit when they're submit, when they're running for council or for mayor. And then we would take those statements of candidacy to Charleston County Board of Elections. So they were, they were always filed with the Charleston County, which is accepted it here. Charleston County was okay with it so that our folks could, didn't have to drive all the way to North Charleston. Um, this, that was challenged at the last election because the ordinance doesn't say that the city can accept the statements of candidacy, even though they're not really technically being filed with the city. Um, our attorney said, you know, i- it's not clear, there's, there's really no issue. They were always filed with the county. Um, but in order to clarify that and be able to continue to accept the filings here, um, we recommend this change, just so that it's not um, challenged, I guess, in the future.
Just for clarity.
Just for clarity.
But the county had no problem with what, what we were doing before?
No, because if you think about, so now, or at the, at the last election, folks had to go all the way to North Charleston to file. Then the, the staff at Charleston County Board of Elections had to come all the way back here to drop the check. It's just inefficient.
Yeah, this is much better for our residents, for sure.
And, and something preferred by Charleston County.
Yeah, so that's part A to this conversation we're gonna have and vote on, Jimmy, to your point in just a minute. Part B, currently I O P elections, they're nonpartisan, as you probably know. And right now, you have to have a majority to win, so a majority is fifty percent plus one. And um, you saw in your packet, you had some material, Isaac Kramer, who is executive director at the um, Board of Elections for Charleston County, has asked us to look at this for the last couple of years. Uh, and we, we have looked at it a couple of times, haven't taken any action on it. And you saw it in the package, uh, six of the seventeen communities that he oversees use the majority, so six do just what we do. The rest, sixty five percent, use the plurality method. So the top vote getter wins, if you will. The last city to change to that was town of Mount Pleasant, which did it in twenty seventeen. I think Charleston City is also looking uh, under consideration to change the way they vote as well. You know, if you think about the majority method versus plurality, the majority can be confusing, creates runoffs, which typically will reduce um, voter turnout. According to Isaac Kramer, again, executive director of Board of Elections, the plurality winner typically goes on to win the runoff rates about seventy percent of the time. Doesn't always happen for sure, but about seventy percent of the time it does. And the only other thing I would, I would comment on um, around in favor of the plurality is you, you've got a two week time period from the general election to a runoff. So you're really potentially making a hardship on folks that are traveling, military, sick for some reason, want to do some type of absentee voting, is a really narrow period to, to be able to pull that off. So that, that's kind of what we're doing here and looking at these two different pieces. And I said the final comment, this is really the final comment. Anytime we have a first reading, if this happens to get approved tonight, it's referred back to a committee um, for further discussion prior to council reviewing it and approving it at a second reading. So this is kind of first discussion point tonight. Um, we're gonna burst this into two, so I think Nicole, we left all, yes?
I make a comment. About said this, if you did, I apologize, I missed it, but runoff costs are really the same as the general election too.
Correct.
You're talking about, you know, just adding more cost. Also two week time.
Yes.
Um, make this as, as brief as, as possible. Good, the mayor is correct, it's seventy percent of the time um, that the person in runoff wins or whatever. But I need to, I need to make you aware of a little bit of history. Nineteen eighty nine, after Hugo, the um, election was postponed from November to December. At that time, there was four candidates running for mayor. I was one of them. I came in last with about little, under twenty four percent of the vote, which means that they were all just about the same. Um, I don't think citizens won any of us, but. And so, there was an election and um, Clay Cable, who was the mayor from uh, nineteen eighty one or maybe before that to through nineteen eighty five, he came in first. Carmen Bunch was the, was the current mayor at the time, she was in her first term. She came in second. Um, if, a- at that time, and the way it is right now, we, he had to be a majority plus one. That race was extremely contentious. Uh, I guess it wouldn't be an exaggeration to say that Clay and Carmen weren't the best of friends. But uh, that's for another day. But uh, people at that time, I remember the biggest question, it's been a long time ago, uh, saying that whoever's mayor, I wanted to be the majority to pick the mayor. So that when Carmen won the runoff, she beat Clay, but Clay came in first and she was second. And people wanted to say something about Carmen getting elected, which she went on to serve three more terms, total of sixteen years as mayor. The Carmen supporters would say, she won the majority of the vote. So I think that's important. Um, in Mount Pleasant, they have really low turnout sometimes. And if, if you don't vote, you really can't complain, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a traditionalist. I like the way it's running right now. And then you have to have a majority of, of, of the vote to sit in one of these seats. Thank you.
For the comments, we, we've got a couple of motions on the table that we'll need to.
So do, are we having discussion now or are we gonna have discussion after the motion?
Right now.
Well, the motion on the floor is to break it apart.
Right.
So there's no other motion other than that right now? Do you want to vote on that and then have a motion on each of those things?
Yeah, there's two motions on the floor. Rusty made the original motion.
Discuss and approve.
To discuss and approve, I seconded. Jimmy came with an amendment.
To break it apart.
To break it apart.
Correct, that's where we are.
Right, so we're having discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Follow along.
Well, um. I just, you know, we, we've been, we've been doing the majority all these years and I just, and it's always worked. And I just don't understand why we start having to change things, just because some of these other cities uh, have done it that way. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm like Jimmy, I'm a traditionalist. I think we need to leave things alone the way they are. Uh, if they're not broke, don't fix it, so to speak. But I think this is a really big decision. And um, shouldn't a decision like this be put forth to our residents in the form of a referendum? Or do we?
Not required for to be a referendum, because we're not changing the former government.
I mean, it's a way of changing the way of voting or how a person's voting. I think that's a big deal for our residents to at least chime in on, but that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can just say, I talked to the Mount Pleasant mayor this morning and their council certainly took care of it. Uh, you know, in their vote, when they changed in twenty seventeen. Kevin doesn't make it right or wrong, to, to your point, it's not a required referendum item where some are. Other, Rusty.
Do we know if any other municipalities uh, did go to a referendum? How pleasant.
I don't know that.
No, you don't know that what was provided by Charleston County is included in your package.
I mean, it's clear that most municipalities moved to the plurality method. And uh, I mean, it looks like it simplifies things, it looks like it's less expensive, less confusing overall. So I tend to favor it myself.
Other questions, discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing would be that when there is a runoff, that, I mean, we have good voter turnout here generally, but for runoff, you're, you're looking at significantly less voter turnout. So now you have a, a very small portion of the population that's actually making the decision. And the people that all went and voted, now granted, I know they have a chance to go vote again, but they've in some ways lost that vote. Um, so I just think it makes, I think it's more efficient and makes more sense. And you're saying that the Board of Elections is recommend, they're the, who was it that you spoke with?
Board of Elections.
That's recommending this, they obviously know way more about this than I do. So I kind of tend to defer to the experts in the field. Um, so I think, I think it's definitely worth putting it to the second reading, at the very least.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for us to postpone this and get some data to see if what Councilmember Myers is saying is true. I, I, I find it hard to believe because I know how this island operates and people really turn out to vote, but she might be right. On, on the other hand, how much does it cost for an election? Isn't it about fifteen hundred dollars or something?
It's about five, five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see us postpone this for thirty days.
Mr. Mayor, or anybody else for that matter, my concern with the plurality would be the very odd circumstance when you have ten people running for a position. And then somebody can get that position with eleven percent of the vote. And so perhaps there's a hybrid where if, and I, I don't know what the numbers would be, but if so many people are running for, for mayor, for instance, if it's say five, then then you narrow it down to the top three and then it's plurality. I, I don't know if that's, if that's a possibility, if that's something that, that other communities have dealt with. Uh, but I would be concerned with watering down because, because given some of the things that happened over the last year, I could see special interest groups getting people to run for office strictly to water down the vote. And I, I don't want to be able to, them to be able to manipulate our elections.
Like to make a motion to postpone for thirty days.
Second.
Keep it, keep it score at home. We have three motions on the table. This one may over.
We'll see how the minutes turn out next month.
This may desire, it may not.
Did you have a point of information? Was, the intent was this to be the first reading tonight and then we would vote on it at the next meeting anyway?
Yes.
So you're, is, is Jimmy, your motion is to have the first reading at next meeting and then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like you more data.
Yeah, so more research, more data. So John, to your question, what would happen is it would get assigned to a committee. Normal world, first reading would get approved, it gets assigned to a committee. You know, this, this ordinance doesn't really fit any committee very well, uh, quite honestly. So, you know, maybe we default it to personnel, maybe we give it, give it to all committees to this conversation so you can weigh in all, all along the way as opposed to having to wait. Uh, I know there's precedent for that as well, to give it to all committees and let everybody weigh in at the same time. Um, but, so John, to your question. Other Desiree?
Just a clarification for the motion, what, what kind of data is being requested? So that we can make sure that we can provide that.
May I answer now? Um, what I'm thinking is, is responding to Councilmember Myers' point. And that is just basically the, the numbers.
Turnout percentage.
The turnout percentage, and then when you had a runoff, um, what the turnout percentage was on that. Or let's say the past six elections.
For, for just city council, for the.
Council and mayor.
I'm sorry, for all.
And I'll be helped to, be happy to do, helping with the research. Although it'd be, it'd probably not a good idea. Where'd you get these numbers? It's okay.
Hey Jimmy, can I add one too? And I think to Rusty's question, you know, let's see if we can gather any data on, did any municipalities take it to a referendum? And have conversations, Kevin?
So, uh, question, are we deferring both items?
Postponing.
Oh, sorry, postponing both, both items?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're, the election that's coming up, so our people have already filed, so we would be getting in front of anything.
Okay.
Yeah. Final.
If, if, if we don't postpone this, though, we could still get more information before we actually vote on this, right?
Correct.
So we could, we could vote for, on the, we could approve the first reading, get this requested information and have it before the second reading, correct?
Good. That's a path.
Okay, I'm just, timing wise, that, that's how it would work.
I'd just like to add on to the information that we're gathering, what, what I talked about, which is whether or not there's a hybrid in, in there. Um, so that we don't have the issue of ten people running for one office.
Yeah, and I think Board of Elections could certainly, yeah, give us some guidance around that. Yeah, Katie, to your question, yes, first time everybody seeing this Friday when the package came out. Um, yes, I think you're right, you could certainly take the next thirty days and, and do this. I, I think, given the tenor of the conversation tonight, I, I'm totally fine if we, there's no rush. We don't have an election in front of us. The one, this special election coming up on April fourth or fifth, people have already filed. We wouldn't, you know, help them in any way at this, so there's no hurry at all with this particular topic. So I, I think, I, I fully support. What's the right word, Jimmy?
Postpone.
Postponing.
Postpone.
Postponing, yep. Nicole, do you want to start there and that would take care of the other motions that are pending, right?
Yes, sir. Motion to postpone, Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vigosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Good conversation, thank you all for that. Next item, miscellaneous business, item A is consideration of recommendations for appointments for the ATAX task force. This is in your package, but just for the record, I'll go ahead and read. Um, we were recommending, and just by way of remembrance, January twenty fifth, at City Council, we decided, we voted, City Council voted, not the mayor, City Council voted um, to create a task force with evaluating and presenting a go forward business model with specific recommendations for the expenditure of accommodation tax revenue specific to tourism advertisement and promotion. Task force, I'll have six months to research and present back recommendations to the City Council. Rusty, Desiree and myself have spent since January twenty fifth, um, putting this task force together, which actually has its first meeting on Thursday at nine A M. in this room. So these are the members, I'll just make this in the form of a recommendation and a motion for these committee members. Uh, Rusty Streetman, representative from Wild Dunes Resort, Sam Paris, representative from the Palms Hotel in the Seaside Inn, Melissa Sambana, Chair of the ATAX Advisory Committee, Ray Burns, representative from a rental management company, Randy Walker from Dunes Properties, a representative from the food and beverage industry, Brett Jones, representing the Dinghy, Poppies, Luganaleys and Smugglers, a resident owning rental property, Curtis Kay, President of the I O P Chamber of Commerce, who happens to also be a resident, Katrina Lembach of the I O P Beach Chair Company, and an I O P resident, Sarah Vega.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Questions, comments, thoughts, observations?
There are some good people on this committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what I'd like to add, to clarify a little bit, is that when this was first brought up, you gave us six months from January twenty fifth, if I remember correctly.
That's what it is in my head, Rusty.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna quibble over a month, yeah.
Leading the task force, that's in my head also. I'm thinking that what we do is we assemble this task force, get to work, we concentrate on what the subject is at hand and we come back uh, after very thoughtful consideration and probably a number of presentations from other, other entities and other uh, municipalities even. Uh, we will come back with what we feel like are the best recommendations we can come up with for consideration of council. So excited, looking forward to it and uh, we'll be ready to go.
Comments, questions? Nicole?
Motion to approve the list of appointees to the task force, Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vigosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Item B, consideration of application for surf instruction permit for twenty twenty two. We've got two, one from Salt Marsh Surf with Philip Antman and one from Soul Surfer Surf Camps and Kai Dillon. And I think both of these were involved in our um, initial uh, program last year. You've got the information from each of these folks in your packet, so if we have a motion to approve.
To approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Are, are they required to have any kind of liability insurance?
Absolutely, and it's, it's detailed on the application in your packet. And it's, I think it's listed, the city's listed as a.
Additional insurance.
Additional insurance, thank you, thank you.
And as part of their application, they did provide copies of all the certifications and the copy of their um, general liability. We did not include that for obvious reasons, but um, we, we do have that in our possession. Um, all three of the businesses that participated in our pilot program last year
All three of the businesses that participated in our pilot program last year were notified that you all will be, will be considering applications. Only two of the three submitted it.
Is there a deadline, Desiree? I can't remember.
No, we haven't. I, I, I do think that that's something that I want to consider in the future. Just so that we're not, we don't have scattered sort of deadline, uh, applications being submitted. I think they would prefer the earlier the better so that they can get ready to go for the season. These permits are only valid for a year, a calendar year. So next year they'll have to submit again.
Nicole?
Both of you got the story. That's okay. Good. Councilmember Anderson?
I.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Hi.
Councilmember Hahn?
Hi.
Councilmember Myers?
Bye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman?
I.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Mayor Pounds?
Hi.
All in favor?
Thank you. Item C, tonight, it's just a discussion of strategies to increase efficiencies of council and governance. Just a quick preamble background for residents and a reminder for council. At our retreat in January, we had a brief conversation about how we could be council more efficient, staff more efficient, and for us to be perceived as an effective group. You know, we had one of those ideas we just talked about around the elections that were postponing for thirty days for good conversation. Another idea was to further discuss the committee structure and explore the idea of using workshops like many other municipalities do. Just for quick reference, last year between committee and council meetings, there were a hundred and forty meetings in this room, all of which requires significant amount of time and prep time by department heads and the city administrator. In twenty-one, there were two hundred and sixty-one working days, which means the city held a committee, council, board or commission meeting every other day. It's not specific, nothing special about twenty twenty-one. This is our life, it's about a hundred and forty meetings a year. If we didn't have anything special, it's about a hundred and two, a hundred and three meetings a year that we would be having. And on average, prepping for a committee meeting takes staff, collectively our staff, about eight to ten hours to, to do that. So what I'm putting forth tonight is only a discussion, nothing, we're not voting, we're not doing anything else. But all I'm putting forth is a, looking at a different way to approach our duties, create efficiencies for council and staff and ensure council's focus is at a policymaking level and not day-to-day operations. There are many options we can look at that I've looked at, done some research on. One option would be involved, would involve having a one workshop a month as opposed to all our committee meetings where we would have discussion on topics, but not take any votes. We would obviously need to design the workshop agenda in a way that the right level of information is provided for council to ensure we're meeting our strategic plan. Our staff has the resources to get their jobs done and our residents are receiving the level of services they deserve. We could in essence create a dashboard, if you will, of all the departmental reports that go on today and take it up to a little bit higher level, if you will. According to the Municipal Association of South Carolina, about eighty percent of municipalities across the state, this is a little bit anecdotal, but about eighty percent of the municipalities use some type of workshop system. So about twenty percent are using the committee structure that we use today. So again, there's no vote. All I'm asking is if there's some level of consensus here, let Desiree and I go away and put some structure around what this process may look like, what the workshop might look like, what committees we might could fold into the workshop. And then we'll come back to you and if there's since consensus again, we'll continue down the path. And one way we can kind of test drive this, if you will, is our committee structure is in an ordinance today. So we could suspend that ordinance for a month, six months a year, whatever, just to test drive the workshop schedule to see if we do create the efficiency, efficiencies we're talking about for council and more importantly for staff. And then, you know, after a trial period, we can have further conversation around the topic. So we'd just love to hear from you tonight on what your reaction to that is. I know there's not a lot to go on. There's a lot of work that would need to happen before Desiree and I went down a path. Just wanted to have some level of discussion on, is there general interest to at least exploring an alternative? To see if we can make ourselves, again, particularly staff, a little more efficient. It's just a lot of meetings and a lot of hours that people are spending prepping for these things. So Katie.
Yeah, I would just like to add something that I think is, would be really interested in exploring to see how this works is the ability to, to really have a sense of what's going on throughout council. And, because I, just from just being here for not even two months, my sense is that, yes, I understand that you can watch every committee meeting from home. But I'm going to go ahead and be the one to admit that I don't do that. And so I feel like you're missing out on, you know, the important things that are happening in other committees. So I think it might help for us to be, to do a better job of being not, not necessarily on the same page, but knowing how to get to the same page. So I think it'd be really interesting to see how it works.
Claire?
I support a hundred percent, Mr. Mayor. It, it, the, the inefficiencies of how we're doing it now, I think are just massive. And we review the same material over and over and over. I, I support you going down that road and coming back to us with a recommendation of how to streamline things. Thank you.
Jimmy? First glance at it, I, I don't really think such a good idea, but I'm certainly open to what you're proposing and that is just to take a good, hard look at it. But first passes, I, I, I think the committee structure is working just fine. And I'm certainly would like to see what you and Desiree can.
Kevin?
I mean, I'm all for exploring and trying to find out maybe a better way. But again, I'm, here we go again, changing something we've been doing for all these years. And I don't know that the committee process is, is broken. Maybe there's more efficiency that we can get in our committee meetings. For example, if we don't have any agenda items that are pressing, we just don't have a committee meeting that, that, that month. So may, maybe there's a way of skinning the cat at the committee level. But I, I, I just, I just don't think we need to go a different route. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it amazes me how much time that Desiree, Douglas, our department heads put into just meetings. I mean, it, it, it really is, you know, being two years on council and I look at it and I say, how, how do they get everything done that they can get done during the course of a work week? And there are many times I come by here and there are lights on in this building and there are certain cars that are here and I know people are still working. You know, and we all have a, a right to a little bit of quality of life down the path. And, and I know we do. I know we don't, you know, we don't go over the top with that. But still, I think this is definitely worth exploring. I think there are some efficiencies we may be able to learn from other municipalities that may help us. And again, this may go back to that whole hybrid example we're talking about, where we come up with some sort of hybrid approach that, that works for all of us and, and also makes it a little, a little more efficient and even effective for our staff and for us as a, as a council. I do watch every council, I mean, every committee meeting. You know, I got, I, I need to get a life.
Now he's just showing off.
Yeah, yeah. But, and I may not watch real time, but I do watch them. And, you know, and it's, you know, it's, it's something that I do. And I think to Katie's point, I mean, if you're, if you're not watching some of the committee meetings, you're, you're missing out on a lot of information you might otherwise have. Because you're not keeping yourself totally up to date of what's going on throughout the city.
John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I, I think we should move forward with exploring how we go to more of a committee, or eliminate the committees and go to more of a work session type structure. Just like in business, I think this system is broke, I think. But in business, you, you continually look at continuous improvement, ways to do things better. And I, I don't think that's been done for quite a while here. So I'm very, are in, in general, and I think that's why we've seen a lot of municipalities go to this structure because of the inefficiencies that is built into it. So I'm very supportive of it. I think you should, you should take it forward and try to bring back some, some ideas.
Just nothing, just, I watch as many as possible. As much as wilder, kind of entertaining. Usual suspects.
There was a recent one that was pretty good.
Other? Just read all the minutes? Well, we do that.
And I, I will say, I, that is, I do read the minutes, but I have, but it's not, I mean, you do a wonderful job, but it is not the same. And really, just, no, I know. But actually, and if I could say one more thing, and, you know, even if you watch, you're not seeing executive session. And that to me becomes like the old game of telephone where you're, we're not here, we're not all hearing what's happening. And when you hear it, when somebody else tells you what was said, it gets a little bit skewed and then you tell it to someone else. Well, but for, I mean, council can all hear, council should be able to all know what's being said in excess of session, so.
This is one case where the movie's better than the book.
Councilmember Anderson has something to add.
Jan?
We had our Public Safety Committee meeting, but we also had a separate workshop to deal with the bigger issue where we had a big project on our plate, the Alapamps Connected. So I think this workshop format for the committees would work and still allow us to delve into important topics as they come along.
So Kevin and Jimmy, to everybody's point, you know, I, I, there's nothing that's been done on this topic other than put it on the agenda and have this conversations. There's no predisposed structure at all that Desiree or I, the one having our head, that we're ready to come back with by any stretch. And this won't happen in thirty days at all. But we will go do some research, see if there's hybrids, see if there's. We'll look at all options just to see what's out there from an efficiency standpoint to make sure we can get there. So thank you for the conversation. It was great. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March twenty-second at six PM. We need to go into executive session and Desiree got to, you got some language for me?
Yes.
Thank you. So in accordance with South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy A two, to receive legal advice regarding our ATAX conversation, we will go into executive session. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
I.
Councilmember Boghossian? Councilmember Hahn?
Hi.
Councilmember Myers?
I.
Councilmember Popsen?
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman?
Hi.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Mayor Pounds?
Hi.
All in favor?